Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming. It is very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Tom Potter, pastor of Pine Crest Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, always good to see you, sir.
Always good to see you. I want all the council and all of you to know that I pray for you all the time, not just here. I think, I respect all of you, appreciate all of you, and you're in my prayers all the time. Almighty God, we humbly bow before you, acknowledging you as the supreme authority. We're here tonight grateful for all the leadership of our country and our Commonwealth and this great city. Remember what the scriptures tell us, the supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving a thanks we made for all men, for kings, for all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God and our Savior. And so tonight, we pray for the leaders of this city, that they will act with wisdom in dealing with all the issues that come to their attention, both at council and other settings. We pray for their health and well-being, as well as that of their families. While it's impossible to please everyone, may they listen and act on what is the best interest of the city, both now and in the future. May your values be our values, may your ways be our ways. May we seek the principles of your kingdom as a guideline in dealing with the business at hand. May there be a positive attitude, and may we, as citizens, conduct ourselves showing respect, knowing that it's not what we say, but how we say it. May our children be proud of us, as we set a good example in how we deal with the challenges in conduct business. May our minds be open to options, and may we articulate our convictions with compassion, as well as passion. Thank you for allowing us to live in this great country, the United States of America, and for those that paid the price and put their lives on the line every day, so we can have freedom. And may our citizenship reflect our deep appreciation. Thank you for law enforcement, to keep our streets safe, protect them as they protect us. We pray for the fire and rescue person now that go running in while others come running out, keep them safe. And again, I thank you for this council, and for all that lead this city in many, many capacities. And may this be a constructive meeting to your honor and glory for the betterment of this city and each one of our neighborhoods. May each of us be a good citizen, a good neighbor, for the good of this city. In the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus, we do pray, shalom and amen.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Before you take your seat, I wanted to give you an opportunity to give us some great things that are going on in the church. I always brag about how we go throughout the community at community days and most civic leagues and organizations and always see you there, and that's always nice to see your church as well as yourself there. So, again, thank you for all of what you do in our community.
(inaudible)
Absolutely. You're preaching. You're preaching, brother. Thank you. Members of City Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before you a consideration, the minutes of a call meeting of February the 10th, 2014, a call meeting of February the 11th, 2014, a regular meeting of February the 11th, 2014, and a call meeting of February the 18th, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
With adoption.
Okay.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules will require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Unfinished business, 14-38, use permit. Resolution granting the request of Dan Griffin on behalf of Holiday House to amend a use permit previously approved in April 2009 to construct a 6,000-square-foot recreation center on the property at 4211 County Street. U.P. 1401, first reading vote six zero, approved. Vision principle, robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speaker. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. City manager's report, 14-75, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate $211,400 in the FY 2013-14 general fund to be used for the purchase and sale of EZ-PASS transponders. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 14-76, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement between the City of Portsmouth and the Hampton Road Sanitation District regarding a regional consent order pertaining to sanitary sewer overflows. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have a registered speaker, Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in Woodbine Farm section of Churchland. Principle of Liberty 10. The God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. King Charles II beheaded Al-Jenar in Sydney in 1683 for saying that there is no divine right of kings to rule over the people. Sydney insisted that the right to rule is actually in the people, and therefore, no person can rightly rule the people without their consent. It is acknowledged that the people are divinely endowed with the sovereign power to govern. What happens if elected or appointed officials usurp the authority of the people to impose a dictatorship or some form of abusive government on them? This brings us to the fundamental principle on which the founding fathers based their famous Declaration of Independence. Abuse of power? Here's an example. 14-76, a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement between the City of Portsmouth and the Hampton Road Sanitation District regarding a regional consent order pertaining to sanitary sewer overflows. On January the 27th, the city manager gave a presentation about the regional wet weather management plan. The plan would allow the Hampton Road Sanitation District to develop and pay for the wet weather plan with Portsmouth and other localities. Is it true that Portsmouth will obtain potential savings? Hampton Road Sanitation District would assume all liability for capacity related to wet weather overflows. The city would retain oversight of the sewer system, but not the storm water management. The agreement is being drafted that would alleviate Portsmouth and others from the rehab portion of the consent order, which is court ordered. A revised consent order would be handled by the HRSD, and their agreement requirements would be to find, fix, and repair severe structural defects. Portsmouth doesn't have a system of infrastructure for storm water management. Signatures are required by February the 28th by Portsmouth for something we don't have in place. HRSD assumes responsibility of wet weather overflows, pays for the development, pays for upgrades, consent order revised to reduce Portsmouth responsibilities. Portsmouth no longer has to submit separate rehab and wet weather plans. This plan sounds good, but let's look at what Portsmouth is doing to turn over to the wet water management team. The city's storm water management plan has not been updated since 1995. The city is not adequately addressing storm water issues at its operations center. There's evidence of leaking vehicles, spills that have not been cleaned up, improper material storage, and the lack of proper controls for street sweeping waste. The city has not provided training program for construction site operators. The city contracts out most street maintenance and repair. The tolerance levels used by the city are significantly higher than other storm water programs. The city's annual report does not include all of its required elements listed in the permit, including facilities inspected and results of monitoring performed. The report recommended development of a written storm water management master plan. The city must revise its field screening program to address the issues identified in the report. Institute training for construction site operators. The city must include all required information in its annual report. The city reduced discharges associated with pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, and maintain a public relations plan to educate the general public and targeted groups about the discharges. So, by the way, what has happened to all the money that the citizens have been paying for storm water management on our real estate property tax bill? Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Si. Madam Clerk?
There are no additional speakers on this item? Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and the council will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. 14-77, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to Hampton Road's Regional Jail Authority Service Agreement to permit a reduction in the authority's operating budget reserves. Vision principle, efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and Mr. Mark Adalde Kiotrowski is our speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. I have some concerns about this particular item. Reducing the reserve fund at the regional jail, the budgeted reserve fund at the regional jail, from a 90-day fund to a 60-day fund, in the face of a budget issue, that being that prisoners, outside prisoners actually, not necessarily Commonwealth prisoners, not prisoners from the four constituent jurisdictions, but federal prisoners, immigration cases and the like, has created a budget shortfall. And this is being looked at as one of the ways of mitigating that. I recognize, according to the analysis, that if you don't take this action, we're looking at a $1.6 to $2.3 million increase in terms of the fees that we pay to the jail. Each locality would be facing similar figures. Of course, I'm not really concerned about any locality but this one in terms of balancing their budgets. Now, one of the justifications for reducing this, and it's not one to scoff at, but one of the justifications is that the budgetary reserves of each of the four member localities stands behind the budget of the regional jail. If you decide to reduce the reserve, I would feel more comfortable if you would set aside a special fund that is designated as a reserve fund and set the amount equal to the amount of the reduction. That way, the money doesn't leave the city of Portsmouth. There's still opportunities to invest it and earn some return on it, but it's there in the event that something untoward happens in terms of the finances of the jail. I don't like the fact that we are responding to a loss of revenue by reducing the reserves. That reminds me of back in the 90s when the lending reserve limits for banks were reduced, but the insured deposit limit was raised. There's something out of sync here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item? Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and the council will be voting electronically. This item is adopted seven zero. New business, 14-78, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, there are no boards and commission members to deliberate tonight, but as always, we're in need of board and commission members, particularly women. A lot of our boards and commissions are kind of out of balance with guys versus girls, and we want equal representation. So, if you've got some spare time on your hands, please get a board and commission application. You can get it in a few ways. You can go to our website, portsmouthva.gov, or you can call the clerk's office, and they'll be glad to forward you an application. But, once again, we'd love to have you serve our city and have imprint on the history of Portsmouth. Our boards and commission members make many of the decisions that result in either new projects, new ordinances. Council depends on them to do the heavy lifting in most cases. Our positions are part-time, and we need all the volunteers that we can get to keep our city moving. Thank you.
14-79, items submitted by council members.
Let me, first of all, I want to congratulate two of our high schools. The Woodrow Wilson High School Girls Basketball Team won the conference championship last Friday at Norfolk Scope, and our boys at IC Norcom also won at Norfolk Scope, and we beat two Norfolk teams. So, we're very proud of each one of them, and actually, right now, at 7 o'clock tonight, both of those teams are playing two Suffolk teams. So, let's hope we can take Suffolk down as well. But I want to congratulate all of those kids for doing a fine job and how well they represent us when we travel and do regional things. We're in the regional phase now, and you integrate and mix with other people from other cities, and it's very important how our teams and our coaches and our schools conduct themselves, and they do it in a great fashion, and it just makes you proud and honored and wants you to at least recognize them. So, with that, secondly, I want to thank all of the citizens that came out to Hoffler Creek Wildlife Preserve Saturday. We had a walk with the mayor. It was dubbed the Polar Walk, but wasn't that cold. We had about 35 citizens that came out, and I think almost half of them were new, first time visitors to Hoffler Creek. And so Helen and the staff did an outstanding job of talking about Hoffler Creek, and you know, and if you haven't been there, it really is a jewel within an urban setting to be able to go to a preserve like that, and the peace and quiet and all of the things that that reserve has to offer, and walking around Lake Ballard, I think it was about a mile, maybe a mile and a half, and the dialogue. And we also were graciously pleased to see the head of our Health Department, Dr. Chin was there, so I allowed him to speak to the group, to talk a little bit about our health initiative and some of the things that we're trying to work on as a citywide initiative, and some of the primary diseases and sicknesses that affect citizens in Portsmouth. And naturally, I think out of the top three, smoking had something to do with all three of them, and you know, and our wellness and our lifestyle choices and what we eat and all. So, I was very pleased with the 35 folks that showed up, and it was a very diverse group, and some I hadn't seen before. So, that shows we're doing something, doing something right, and that's great, because again, we bumped up a little on the statewide scale of where we're ranked health-wise, but we're still not ready to talk about it, because we're still at the bottom. But, and then finally, I want to thank our Waste Management Division. Last week, we had a six-month state of the recycling update, and I want to thank the citizens that came out, and I want to thank our staff for doing an excellent presentation and engaging the few that were there and putting the numbers out there, and we're doing extremely well. Dennis likes to say, "Don't get hung up on the numbers, Mayor," and I get hung up on the numbers, because we've got about 55% on average that are participating in this city, and that's very good. And some of the savings that we're hoping, if we stay on that pace, to realize, I think we said we're projected maybe to save a million, Dennis? Somewhere around a million dollars. So, that's enormous for us to be able to implement a program like that, and hopefully in the first year, to be able to have that type of savings, and to partner with a company right here in Portsmouth who's expanding their facility, they've hired more Portsmouth residents to work there, and we're saving money. That is a win-win situation, and no matter how you look at it. So, it's things like that that, you know, you want to take your hat off to the council and the staff for being bold enough to get back into this recycling game, and our citizens for their participation. So, with that, Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Number one, while we're thanking city staff and folks, this past Saturday night, the Portsmouth Museums Foundation, which is the private fundraising group made up of a regional board who raises private funds for our city museums, most recently for all of the exhibits in the Children's Museum expansion, had a wonderful black tie masquerade gala this past Saturday night in the Children's Museum, which was lots of fun. It was a great party, attended by several hundred. Vice Mayor Cherry and I were both there. We had a good time. We shook a leg and had some fun, and it was a nice event, and the decorations in the Children's Museum were truly amazing, that were all done by city staff, and it was beautiful. So, that's number one. Number two, Mr. Moody made a comment earlier about needing some women to volunteer to be on boards and commissions, and you know, I'm a big one for girl power, and you might notice there's another pretty face on the dais tonight, and so I thought it might be appropriate to welcome Sharon Cordell, who is our deputy city attorney, who is here joining us tonight, which is very nice.
Because?
Because there's a new baby in the house. Our city attorney, George Wilson, is the new granddaddy of a little girl today.
That's right.
So, we wish him congratulations.
Well done. Mr. Moody?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That health index might have took a blow tonight, Mayor, with that cherry pie that was on the menu. I hate to tell you that, that the mayor didn't eat a slice, by the way, for the record. I got a couple of things, Mayor, before I get into the other thing. I appreciate you mentioning the sports teams that have excelled in Portsmouth, and I played sports in high school and community football. I only played on one championship team, and that was the Olive Branch Apaches, back when I weighed 70 pounds, so that was probably 120 pounds ago. And I wish we'd have had a mayor, because we won the championship, and we went to East Point, Georgia, and tackled their team down there, and I think that score was pretty ugly, as I recall, but I appreciate you doing that, because the kids and their parents, I'm sure, remember those things a lot. But I had a call from a citizen who had a misfortune last year of having their house burned down, and the lady called me with what I thought was a good suggestion. She said, "You know, when your house burns down, there's a lot of things that have to be done." And she was scurrying, she said she'd like to have a dollar for every time she had to go to City Hall and find out what to do next. And she came up with the idea that perhaps we can get someone on staff to implement, and that's to come up with a checklist for those occasions. They don't, fortunately, they don't happen often, but in the course of a year, unfortunately, it's usually a couple of those situations. So, you know, if there's concurrence with my colleagues, I think it's a good idea to have a checklist like that available to direct citizens what they need to do. And like she said, everything from contacting refuse to have your trash collection not to be picked up, hence you don't pay the bill since your house is offline, but things of that sort, I think was a pretty good idea. And if we could put some work on it and maybe come up with it, it'd save people like that a lot of time, a lot of trouble.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Absolutely. All right, and before we move on, just for the record, my orange and blue is for Wilson, and my maroon and gray is for IC Norcom, so I'm representing both schools tonight. And so, hopefully, if we get out of here non-agenda speakers early enough, we can catch some of that ballgame tonight. Don't want to drop a hint. Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Mr. Clayton Stevens, and he's followed by Ms. Terry Danaher.
Hey, sir. How are you?
My name is Clayton Stevens. Recently, I've been a cab driver for over 20 years. As of last year, they denied my cabment issues, so I appealed a case, and nothing has been called out or recognized on this matter. And they've been issuing out temporary cabments, and just because of my conviction in '08, I don't think it should matter. There was a militia within charge, that was five and a half years ago. But I did my time. I don't drink no alcohol anymore in the last three years. I'm doing good. The only thing I consider is to help me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask, have you gone through the process?
I went through the process and everything. I hadn't heard from ranking or nobody.
No one? Okay. We got somebody here that can talk to him, maybe? Okay, yeah. All right, we'll have somebody to address you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Following Ms. Danaher is Gervini Dalmo.
I'll speak really fast, okay? First, I'm going to start with the tolls, because that's what I do. I keep getting a lot of questions, and good evening, everybody. I keep getting a lot of questions about why we're still at it. The tolls are there, you know, why are you bothering? And I have to say that the site that we've had, our Facebook site, has actually increased membership since the toll started, because people are still very outraged, and the ridership through the tunnels indicates just how outraged people are. I was down at HRTPO this past week, and staff there were telling me that there is a great deal of concern about the drop in the number of people who are going through the tunnels, because if they're not going through at 75 cents and a dollar, what's going to happen when those tolls go up? So, we are making a point, and we want to continue to make that point. We were very, very happy with the governor and the secretary of transportation immediately going at this problem, as had been promised. problem, as had been promised, and dropping the tolls. But as was said, we don't want that to be the only step. And the governor and the secretary of transportation both said this was just a first step. And they're examining what can be done and, and how they can go about changing things for us. So one of the reasons we're continuing to do what we're doing is to keep, to keep that problem upfront. Because God knows, there are demands on the governor's time and the secretary of transportation. All you have to do is look at a list of transportation issues. And we know that they're, they're busy looking at these other things, but we need to make sure that they don't, they don't say, "Okay, well we did that. Let's move on to the next thing." So we want to keep it fresh. And, uh, therefore we will continue to do what we do. Um, we also are looking at the Public-Private Transportation Act itself, which really needs to be changed. And I know that there were several bills on the table this session, but they have agreed to withdraw the, the delegates and senators who put those out, withdrew for the most part, um, those bills to give the governor and the, the new transportation secretary a chance to look closely at what went wrong and what is the best way to change it. So that is, again, that is fine. We're, we're happy to, to give that extra time, but we want to make sure that they don't lose sight of it. And, and it doesn't get lost in, in all the other things that need to be done in Richmond. And we know there are a lot of things that need to be done in Richmond. So we are continuing to do the tunnel shun. Um, and in fact, uh, several members of the group, the, the Tide Water Against Unfair Tolls and No Tolls, um, have been pushing for another protest. Um, so in the one-month anniversary since the toll started is March 1st, which is this Saturday, um, back at the Antello's Pavilion outside on the sidewalk, behaving peacefully with our signs, uh, we will be meeting again. Um, that's on top of the tunnel, so it's very symbolic. And, and we like to, to get there. And, and we've had very good response, uh, from drivers to be in there. We've had people we never saw before show up and pick up a sign and, and stand there. Um, people rotate in and out, so, uh, you don't ever see 100 people at once. But, but there is a, a, a group that, that really is, is adamant about this. And it's, it's been very interesting to see people coming in and saying, you know, "I, I didn't realize this was happening. But now that I know it's happening, I'm going to do something about it." So, so we're still working on that. Now, taking off that hat and putting on the farmer's market hat, um, spring is coming. And, and I know you can't tell by going outside the door today, but Saturday you could. And, uh, so in April, after a few things have had a chance to grow, um, we will be opening up the farmer's market again on the 26th, which is the last Saturday of the month. And then the market will meet every Saturday, uh, until December 20th through December 20th. Um, the market meets at Court and High Streets and there is bus service there. And we ask people from all over the city, "Come on down, see the market." We have an incredibly diverse market. We have a diverse customer base. We have people from all over the place. We have a lot of people from different parts of Portsmouth who are vendors at our market. And so you can meet some of your neighbors from other parts of the, of the city who are selling everything from cupcakes to kumquats. Well, not really kumquats, they don't grow in Virginia, but you get my meaning.
Squash.
Right, squash. Um, anyway, it's, it's, uh, it's getting there. We're gonna, we're gonna be opening up soon, so please start your grocery list now and come on down to the market. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Terry, I just want to let you know, it's halftime and Norcom is up 23 to 17. I know you wanted to hear that. Yeah, yeah, right. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. You can go for it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I came here today to address, uh, discrimination issue with the DCS Portsmouth Agency. I recently was, uh, went there to address some of my concerns. Since November, I've been addressing my concerns with this agency, excuse me, with this agency, and they just ignored all of the concerns that I had. I finally went and recorded some of the, um, conversations that I had because no one would believe what I was saying. So if you don't mind, I would like to play some of that, um, to prove what I've been saying. Because I'm not understanding how she can come here and...
Any mother can walk in this office, ask for applications for services and say that when they come in this office, we are assuming that the children reside with them. Any person that comes to our doors or go online if they're not one of these is alleging to us that their children reside with them, that they are the children's parents, they are the mother, they gave birth to these children, and the children reside with them.
So if a father comes here, he can't, he, 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 what does he have to write?
If the father brings a custody order in this office...
So a father has to bring a custody order and a mother does? In there, she basically said that because I'm a male, I have to show proof of custody for my children. And because she's a female, she does not. And she had all the right to ask for a cust-, um, ask for child support services. Um, there's a procedure they were supposed to follow that they did not, and I addressed that as well. And that got ignored. They told me to call the hotline. I called the hotline. The hotline told me to call them. And we've been going around in circles since November. Um, I finally got ahold of, um, the director and I spoke to him, Mr. Hale, which is the assistant director of the DCSC enforcement agency. And still, they continue to ignore my concerns. Um, they did a mistake with the mailing of the summons. Um, they mailed me the summons, which was supposed to be November 15th. Everything was done in one date. There was nothing that said, um, when I was supposed to be there. So I never even got a, a chance to fight for my opportunity to voice that there was already a court pending for this matter. So with that concludes my situation. I wanted to know, why are these things happening? I shouldn't be discriminated against because I'm a male. I have the same rights as she has. And there was no order based on, uh, uh, us waiting for a court order to happen for our children. But my concerns would continue to be ignored. I wanted to know, what can the council do about this matter? It's a serious matter. I don't want anyone else to be a victim of this situation. I don't think it's fair. It's very discriminatory. And I don't want it to happen again.
Okay. Are you done, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think we have a jurisdictional issue here. And I'm gonna let our city manager, if he would, uh, chime in.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, he's talking about a non-city agency. It's a state agency. And, um, not to be giving him advice, he may want to seek, um, legal assistance through a lawyer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Danielle Herro. Haro. Haro.
Oh, that's Honore.
Honore, okay. I'm sorry.
That's PJ's daughter. Oh. Uh, you don't know PJ? You should know PJ. Okay. How you know?
Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Danielle Honore. I am a student athlete at Churchill High School. And today I just want to speak on, um, my perspective about the funds that were given to Churchill High School and they were taken away, actually. And I just want to give my perspective on it. Um, for the past few years, I've had the privilege to be a part of the girls' basketball team at Churchill High School, the varsity girls' basketball team. And the money that was taken away from us would have been a great contribution to many of our needs. We have many things that we actually need. First off, we need new uniforms. Most of them are actually too small or too large. So for me, I'm one of our tallest players. We have pretty much a smaller team, so I have to give the uniform that would fit myself, have to give it away to someone who's a little bit smaller. And so when I'm running down the court, instead of like focusing on the game, I have to keep pulling up my shorts and pulling it up, making sure it's not going to fall down because the elastic band is worn off. And there's no strings in the shorts, so I'm just running, trying to pull up my shorts. Also, um, the shoes, we don't have team shoes. So if you know anything about sports, the first thing you do when you get on the court, you look at the players. And if a team is not a unit or looking as one, that's somewhat of a, it's not an intimidation factor. If you see a team that everyone looks up to par, you're like, "Oh, God, we're about to get beat." But if you look at a team and you see it's not all on one page, then you're just like, "Oh, no, we got this." So all of us don't have the same shoes and we don't have money to get shoes. And we also don't have warm-ups to wear on game days. So I was always brought up where a team is one. And when we go out in public, we should be represented as one. Because we're not only representing Churchill High School, we're representing the city of Portsmouth. So when we go out and they can't tell that we're Churchill High School, we're not a team. We're somewhat individuals. So I just thank you all for allowing me to speak today. And I hope that you all will take what I've said into consideration as we will really need the funds. They will be a huge, um, contribution to our needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. You did a very outstanding job. Let me ask you, have you, uh, talked to the school board about this matter?
No, sir.
Okay. You may want to start at the school board and, because all of these issues fall within there. Now, we do provide funding to the schools for different categories and then they take those monies and spend them however. But you may want to start with the school board. And then if it's a funding matter that we, the city, from an allocation standpoint, haven't met the standard that they need in order for those things to occur that you're talking about, then, yeah, then the pressure should be put on council to provide funding. But I would start with the school board first and then go from there.
Okay, thank you.
But you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Rowe?
Yes, sir. You did a very good job, too. Both of you. And I just wanted to emphasize that the city council has not taken away any money. And your, uh, recommendation that she go and speak, uh, to the school administration and school board is very, very appropriate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And good job. Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, there are, there are many times when the Athletic Association or whoever handles those situations, sometime they're in a bit of a dilemma and it's inappropriate for, uh, those teams or bands to solicit, uh, the faith community, the churches, and, uh, they do help. And I'd just like for the young lady to know that.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clark Toler and he's followed by Ms. Kintrel Devon.
As you approach, did you get any takers last month for Men of Sweetheart?
I ain't told you.
You offered your services.
Yeah, I did mail right. Mail right. Vice Mayor and city council members. And it's a good sign, now, Mr. Rowe especially. All the time I was in the military was always I was right, was never I was left. So I was left is a beauty on the, on the podium tonight. Not saying that the rest of you ain't beautiful now, but look to your right left. Most of the time you don't hear I was left, but tonight it's I was left. You look great. But anyway, I want to thank the director of Public Works. He's right on the ball. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Well job, well done, well taken care of. But now, Park and Recreation better get on the ball. It's too many shabby places the inspectors are missing. And I don't think it's my duty, everybody's duty to see these things because they have their ride around in their little yellow, white truck with the yellow light. They can see just like I see. But anyway, I want to say tonight, this is the end of Black History Month. I haven't heard any of you people have, that say anything with all this greatness we got in this city. I would like to go back to say, the first two Afro-Americans during that time that was black, now it's Afro-American. But anyway, Dr. Hollis and B. Joe Turner were the first two blacks on city council. Dr. Hollis was the first black male in this city. Lou Brown, Kellogg, out of Bob, there's so many of them. I would like to see these schools, these kids should be coming up here saying this. Now, this is the end of the month and nobody on this council says, "Well, last year, Mr. Moody, you did. I give you praise for that." But anyway, I'm going to go back to the school. Parkview used to have tennis courts, basketball courts, football. Oh, it's all gone with the new school. These schools need to be opened up for these kids in the afternoon. They need to be opened up and use the gymnasium that they got. Now, I was at Parkview Civil League meeting last night and I was going over their minutes and it says a lot of kids are hanging in groups on the street. And if that school was open, you wouldn't have that. And then I fought this. I fought the parents. You sitting at home, you don't come to council meeting, you don't go to school board meeting. Your kid is walking to school a mile to school. You should be ashamed of yourself with the money that tax we paid. Those kids should be on the bus. I don't care if you live a half a mile. Put these kids back on the school bus. Now, the school bus come right by these kids that live a mile away. Ride right by there. Why can't they pick them up? Now, these kids keep walking through these dark streets, cutting corners. Sooner or later, we're gonna be standing out here on the street with little cows in our hand, little teddy bear laying on the street, crying and all this. Let's do something. The police department doing a good job. We got a great chief, the best chief we had since 1984, I can say that. Even the police department looks good. They ain't unshy and unclean, needn't haircut. The chief is doing a good job and you should back him. But anyway, we got to put these kids back on the school bus, citizen. You sitting at home, you won't come to the city council meeting, but you can run down here and holler, "I don't want no casino here." Come down here, put your kids back on the school bus. We're paying enough taxes. Enough gas to go around to ride them kids. Take these kids off the street, walking through these shortcuts. This is a bad thing. And open up these schools, we got these gymnasiums, and let these kids go in there. All of you up here, you should get behind it. And then this young lady came up here tonight. I'd like to see more of them come up here. So she telling you that the school board has got the money, but she trying to find out, how come if they got money, how come she don't have shorts and a nice suit to play basketball? So I think somebody should call the school board, say, "Hey, get on the ball. Get some new uniforms and get these kids together." And if you always want the kids to do good, then do something for the kids to do good. This is what we need to try doing. But it's a lot in this city is getting done there. You're doing a good job. But look, let's remember next year, all you schools we got here, open up Parkview schools. I live right down the street from it. But I want to see next year, if I be here, that this city council puts some Black History Month here. Now, I'm a Native American. I'm, I'm Afro-American, black, negro, colored. They call me everything. But it's all right. But anyway, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Let me just say, uh, two points. First of all, to you a lot of point about the police chief, and I think I speak for all of us. We support our chief. And you're exactly right. He's doing an outstanding job as well as our police department. And, uh, so I couldn't agree with you more. The second issue on the Black History Month, we have had in this city several activities. I've attended no less than 10 Black History Month programs featuring and honoring different people within our city and within our country. Uh, we, we, I don't think we've historically done anything on the council without a couple of us may have making some comments or some recognitions. But there are an enormous amount of, uh, activities going on. And I think the, um, the Currents this weekend did a feature on the one that, uh, I attended with, um, Bismarck Meyer, former ambassador of Africa, and some of the things that, uh, the relationships with Liberia and the United States. But, uh, even further along than that, there are a whole lot of things that have gone on in this city. So, uh, not sure if they're all publicized in the paper. They normally, if churches or different organizations are having those things, they do publicize them in the newspaper so you can, uh, attend. I actually went to one out in Parkview where you live, uh, because it was in the paper and, uh, had a very nice program. Wasn't many people there, but it was listed and, and I took my kids there. So they're out there and some of them are being publicized. But I think we understand and get you just there. So thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Moody?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Sergeant Major, for reminding me. Uh, actually, I put together something and, uh, I guess this old cold has got my brain not working too good tonight. But, uh, last year, uh, recall doing Black History Month, a Medal of Honor winner by the name of Charles Veale.
Right.
His name is down by the flagpole, as you probably know. And there's another, uh, black Medal of Honor winner, uh, that's also down by the flagpole on the plaque, and that's Corporal Miles James. Both of them served in Company C, the 36 U.S. colored troops. Uh, they fought, of course, on the Union side. And, uh... And his citation says it all. It says, "Having had his arm mutilated, making immediate amputation necessary, he loaded and discharged his piece, a piece back in the day as a gun, with one hand and urged his men forward. This within thirty yards of the enemy's works," in other words, trenches. So, but that wasn't the end of the story. Mr. James, after his arm got amputated and he went to the hospital and got healed, he wanted, they wanted to give him a desk job and he would have no part of it. He said, "I want to go back with my men." So, he went back with his troops and served until October of 1865. So, quite a brave man, obviously. And came back to this area. And according to the historic records, he lived until 1871. And he's buried unfortunately in an unknown grave in what was then Norfolk County. So, I didn't forget it. I did forget, I got wagging my tongue and I forgot I had it right here in my book. But thanks for the reminder, Sergeant Major.
Next time I touch the Vice Mayor Chair and Ms. Randall and also Dr. Edman, Councilman Edman. So, touch them next time. Maybe let them speak. Thank you for remembering again. Thank you.
Hold on, we got a couple other here. Mr. Cherry and then Ms. Randall want to have a piece of you. Yes, sir.
Don't leave yet.
I hope I didn't start something over here.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
No, no, but I do think and I agree with all your comments. And it would be appropriate, maybe next year, we remember that as a council, we did something to recognize Black History Month and for what our people did. Because some of those names you mentioned, weren't for them, there wouldn't be a councilman page, Cherry. So, I appreciate your comments. On the opening of schools matter, as I told the lady who's going to speak after you about a month or so ago, we have endorsed opening the schools. Our Parks and Rec Director has put together a proposal and presented to the superintendent for him and the school board to view. She's ready to staff them. We're ready to provide security. We're ready to clean them up. We just need them to open the schools. So, we've committed to doing that. So, it's not, so as the mayor told the young lady, that's also going to be a school board issue. The city is ready to do what need to be do to open those schools up for recreation right now.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, Sergeant Major. There have been a lot of Black History programs going on all around throughout the city. At St. Mark, we have a Black History Moment every week. And to that end, Judge Morrison gave the last one this past Sunday in reminding us about Thurgood Marshall, who's always not spoken of a lot because of all the marching and things that go, the court by way of him being the person up front to present it, it would have been a shame. But there have been so many things going on. And I'd like to invite you to St. Mark Christian Academy, where our young people will close out this Thursday with Black History Month. I think you'd be delighted, Sergeant Major, to see some of these young people.
And their pants aren't hanging off of them and their skirts aren't up. What else you like to complain about? All of those things. You won't find them over at St. Mark. So, you ought to come and get a bird's eye view of the great work that's going on there, sir.
See, I don't complain about that because they can't come in my house with plaits on their head, earrings in their, or their pants down. And they know that, so they don't come and they know better not to come.
You won't have many in your house.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, they come because their parents are doing what they supposed to do. See, it's all the parents.
Right. Ms. Randall?
How are you doing? I am just so happy to be still young enough to be here. And I emphasize that because a lot of the things that came through the division in terms of pride and dignity and individual worth, they were points that were emphasized during the time that I spent in the school division and followed after me, even as I worked out in the community. You cannot take away the dignity and pride of a group of people who helped to develop the country and the city that we live in. Many of us can remember when and where. But the thing that has happened a lot of times, people have gotten so involved with the day-to-day things that they have forgotten that the children are indeed our future. And unless we train them and guide them, not only through school, but through their religious and faith base and home training, we cannot make them into the citizens that we want them to be. And it's a community endeavor. And I'm so happy to hear you speak about the community pride, the family pride that was so evident in our homes and families for years. It's up to us to take control of our communities to ensure that we still embrace our children and let them know that they are somebody because the Creator didn't make any junk. And that was the message that we gave to all of them. And the children lived up to that expectation because they knew that you, Mr. Toler, believed in them. And the mayor would believe in them. And everybody else who was within the sound of our voices looked up to them. And parents did not mind at that time correcting you. If you walked up the street and you were in the era of doing something wrong, we respected one another. I think we need to enforce that. We are all children of the community. We belong to everybody. And it's up to us to feel that kind of love for all of the children that come by us. And I just feel as if we need to push. I'm looking at these young people out here. I'm so proud to see you here. Stand up so they can all see how many of the young people that are here. Stand up so people can see who you are. Don't be ashamed. Stand up and represent yourself. Even the mayor is trying to go back. But the thing is, take pride in who you are. And I'm glad you're still preaching that message because I've heard you preach it a whole lot of times. And that's what it's all about. Family pride, community pride, and religious faith. They helps you to love one another and lift one another up, Bishop. And we really appreciate that. And I think we can do it if we all reach out and touch someone. And I just had it in my heart and I had to say it. I'm sick and tired of people putting people down. Let's lift one another up.
I want to thank you, Councilor Randall, for what I was getting at. See, a lot of churches, they have this. Lot of functions everywhere you go, but in church, a lot of people looks at Channel 48. Yeah, please do something about that channel on Saturday and Sunday, just black. And then, sometimes, you can't know, don't anybody ever check that thing?
That's right. You need to.
Hey, let's do something about this. We paying a lot of money, so let's do something about it. But I'd like to see this council say something because so many people, you'd be surprised, can't go to church, they don't tend any function, but it could, should come from you. So, have a nice day.
Thank you. Well done, Sergeant Major. And thank you, Ms. Randall, for your comments. I think you echoed what Reverend Tom Potter talked about in his opening remarks about all of us working together and it does take a village. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Contrail Devon and I reside in Newport. I'm here on behalf of the children in opening the schools. Normally, I speak for myself, but you all know my stance. And I welcome all the children. If their pants are sagging, it doesn't matter because sometimes their parents cannot afford clothes and they're wearing clothes that's too small. So, we have to consider all of the facts before we close our doors on what a child of parents looks like because after all, that is a child. So, I'm going to give remarks dating stating facts that will support opening these schools. You all know, I came at the toll, the casino bill, and I asked if something could be done. I found out a letter was sent from Parks and Recreation, Ms. Margaret Thorne, and there was no feedback. And I do not want these doors to stay closed because it keeps our children on the street. So, let's start with the first fact, and you do not have to believe me. Everything I'm going to tell you, you can find it, research it for yourself. February 24th, February 21st, Virginia Pilot did an article in the paper quoting Dr. Stock, which is some of the information given on behalf of the school board when they was doing their budgeting meeting about the division. These are the children that we serve in Portsmouth. Serves about 14,226 students. About 63% are eligible for free or reduced-priced lunch, which is an indicator of poverty. So, please stop judging our children by the way they are dressed because there is a surefire sign that we have a problem within our city where our children need us to undergird them. I spoke directly with the police chief a few nights ago in a meeting. And I asked him, "What are some of the problems that we run into for children 14 to 22 that's left on the streets between 9:00 P.M., 6:00 P.M. and 9:00 P.M.?" Which are the hours we are asking 12 locations to be open within our city for our children. He said, "There are three main concerns. One, where they find themselves in drug situations. Two, they find themselves car theft situations, dealing with cars. And three, and I want to say this slowly, they're shot by stray bullies." And we have schools that can be open. And we're waiting and waiting and waiting to iron out something so very important. I'm not understanding that. So, I went to several different locations because I hear about parents who you are, it's been stated that they don't want to care for their children. Well, some of them are caring for your parents. They are CNA's and they work the 311 shift. And they're in the hospitals caring for your loved ones to make sure that that shift isn't short because they have to make means for their families. So, I went to Maryview Assistant Living, 901 Enterprise Way. That's in the neighborhood of Parkview. The letter reads, "City of Portsmouth, Mayfair House is a licensed assistant living facility in the city of Portsmouth. We employ 40 employees, plus employees. It has been brought to our attention that an evening safe haven program within the public schools is being considered. Mayfair House employs many single parents that would absolutely benefit from a safe haven program for their children should the program be approved. In our business, it is not uncommon for employees to leave early because my daycare closes at 6:00 P.M. or to be absent from work because I don't have anyone to watch my children this evening. Your considerate approval of opening the public schools for the evening safe haven programs will be a positive benefit to the Portsmouth community, its businesses, and its citizens. Respectfully, Cynthia Payne, R.N. Administrator." I wrote a letter on behalf of Newport, well, I received a letter on behalf of the community Newport. One of the schools within Newport would be represented. "To whom it may concern," we know this is to the council as well as the school board. The community of Newport, I'm going to put this letter down because my time is running out. This one is most important. It's from a funeral home, Steel Bullock Funeral Home. That is 3950 Turnpike Road. You do not have to take my word for it. You can contact them with a follow-up. "To whom it may concern, Steel Bullock Funeral Home has been serving the Portsmouth area and its surrounding communities for many years. As a licensed funeral director and embalmer, I have assisted families of youth that die at the hands of another youth. We have assisted families where gain-related deaths occurred along with senseless homicides. As a business owner in the city of Portsmouth, we are in favor of the evening safe haven for our youth. I am confident that this program will be beneficial to our youth, the community, and their parents. It would give our youth a place to surround themselves with positive structure in the evening and possible eliminate the crime that has the potential of being committed by our youth." And I have many more. So, please, do not delay this. I don't know what needs to be done. I'm understanding there's a conflict in scheduling. But the more we wait and sit on our hands.
Thank you very much, Ms. Devon. Appreciate your comments. Good night. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Frances Jones. And she's followed by our final speaker, Ms. Athena Jones.
Good evening. My name is Frances Jones. I live at 600 Yorktown Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. And I'm here, of course, because of the center that's being built in front of my home. Well, I began to think, if the board had came to us in the beginning and says, or meet with us and says, "Mrs. Jones, Ms. Black, Ms. Lee, Mr. Lee, or whoever in the community, this is what's going to happen." But they didn't do that. So, I took it upon myself and I contact a delegate. I contact Johnny, John Anu. He gave, his office gave me more information about what's going on in the city of Portsmouth than you guys sitting in front of me. And I'm somewhat surprised. No. I should be, but I'm not. Why am I not? Because when you are forthright, when you are, how you put it? If you want to be transparent, you make yourself to be that way. But if not, so what I did, I seek other sources. And I began to think about what was in the news a few days ago. A 10-year-old girl that was in Missouri, that the people tried to prevent her from being kidnapped. And what happened to her? A person took her and killed her. But yet, this council is building a 3,100-square-foot building in front of my home, 490 feet from IC Norcom High School. And we all talk about the children. And I wrote this down. The council, forget about the children of IC Norcom High School. In that building is going to be, tell me, I want you to tell me, what's going to be in that building? Drug addicts, people coming in and out the neighborhood in cars. They're walking down the alleyway, every which way but loose. And so, I asked John Anu office to tell me, what's the city of Portsmouth is going to be put on the third, fourth, and fifth floor of that building? But yet, we care about our children. It's Mr. Edman. It's his alumni. But yet, he voted to put the building right next to his alumni, his school, one that he graduated from, one that I was sitting in the audience where, oh, it's the 100th anniversary. But yet, he voted for it. Come on, city of Portsmouth. I'm only here for a short season. I work for the Navy. When I retire, most likely, I will leave. But that school is not going anywhere. That building is not going anywhere. Those drug addicts that's coming in and out the neighborhood, they're not going anywhere. Matter of fact, they're coming from every which way but loose. And our precious little children that we talk about so dreadingly is in danger. And the situation is getting more dangerous today than it was yesterday. But yet, we sit there with our pious self and we say, "We care about the children. Please don't mention children to me when you voted to put it there. Don't tell me what you love when you put it there." I don't want to hear that. Let's speak the truth. And it could have been put someplace else, but I'm not done yet. Because I want to know, why would the former governor of Virginia Warner would write a bill approximately supposed to be a half a mile from a school, but yet, because you're moving from one location and putting it in another, it's okay? Well, I'm all for a change. It took one crazy woman to took prayer out to school and our school went to hell in a handbasket. But it's going to take one Holy Ghost-filled woman, you understand that? To have the governor, the past governor, he's not a senator? To have someone to change that law so people like you will not use that law to put it 490 feet from high school where our children go? My kids are safe. They graduate from a school in Rome, New York. They were safe. Our kids here in Portsmouth isn't.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Ms. Athena Jones.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. It's interesting because... It's interesting because I had asked, why are we still coming down here to continue to fight against the thirty-one thousand square foot methadone clinic, excuse me, behavioral health care service, that will include methadone addicts, people with addictions, people with psychological struggles? That will, the city will spend ten point four million dollars on a bond to promote the wellness and encourage the wellness of a specific community four hundred and ninety feet from a high school with a seventy-five percent graduation rate. You know, I came here and I saw that IC Norcom was full of cars and I'm like, "Oh, there must be something going on this evening," as I was coming to the council meeting. And I realized that the building, even this evening, houses families and children walking from the community to IC Norcom for an event, right where the thirty-one thousand square foot building will soon be located. So why do we continue to fight when the tolls are still up and we continue to be taxed high out of all the boroughs? Why do we continue to fight? When we hear about the kids and we can't get a place for them to play and to be safe, they'll do it, we've approved it, yes, we've approved it, now we're waiting on someone else and we're still waiting on someone else. Why do we continue to fight? You know, in nineteen sixty-four, March twenty-fourth will be the year that Martin Luther King walked from Selma to Montgomery, Alabama to officially start the Civil Rights. Now before that, people continued to die because of what they believed. People continued to fight. Why? Against insurmountable obstacles. The building that is being put in front of our house is continuing to be put in front of our house. That may be considered an insurmountable obstacle. The tolls, the lights to take pictures of your plates are there. Insurmountable obstacle. So why do you continue to fight? Why do the citizens continue to fight? We fight because if we don't fight, then what is there to talk about? If we don't fight, then no one will listen. Because individual agendas will continue to litter the forefront of newspapers. That's why we fight. We fight for the hopes of other generations so they don't have to traverse drug addicts and addiction. We continue to fight. We continue to fight because the taxes continue to be high, but we yet, we get nothing in return. We continue to fight. Thirty-five years later, we do not have a place for the kids to stay. We have to continue to fight. Community, if we do not continue to fight, no one will fight for us. No disrespect, I have had the privilege of speaking to everyone, including the President of the United States. And I realize if you do not have an ear on the ground and the opportunity to talk to the people in power, their agenda will continue to move forward because it is their agenda, because it is their perspective rooted in their life and their life experiences. And if you never go to them and said, "This is my journey and this is my walk," they will never know that you too, they too, need to fight. So I encourage the people of Portsmouth to continue to fight, to continue to come down here and talk to the individuals that we sit in front of and say, "Enough is enough," so that we can be heard, so that then the generations that are fighting to be heard, to even get a place to stay and be able to get an education so they can have a future, so they can have an opportunity to code things like a young gentleman did last time, to be able to be on the Presidential Council for students, like another student came here. But that can't happen if we don't continue to fight for them. And so I fight for my community today, which includes the people of Portsmouth. And I've heard many people have here tonight fight for their community. And I hope, I said last time, your jobs are very important and it's time to listen. Yes, you cannot do everything, I understand that, but be willing to have a willing ear. And I'm not saying you don't, but I'm saying to be readily willing to have an ear. Because if you don't fight for us, we will have to fight for ourselves. And you're elected to do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Good night.
There is no additional business to come before the council this evening.
Okay. All right, with that, it looks like Wilson is up by four points in the fourth quarter and Norcom is up by ten. We adjourn.